Come to order, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wilmette. I now ask the clerk to please call the roll. And again, I muted everyone, so trustees, you'll have to unmute yourself.
Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
Trustee Barrow.
Here.
Trustee Dodd.
Here.
Trustee Kersman.
Here.
Trustee Kennedy.
Here.
Trustee Plunkett.
Here.
President Balinski.
Here. So we're all here. We obviously have a quorum. This meeting is being conducted remotely via the Microsoft Teams software. I will now ask Peter Skiles, our Director of Administrative Services, to explain some of the logistics tonight to members of the public who may be joining us tonight.
Thank you, President Balinski. Okay, so everyone, as President Balinski mentioned earlier, have started this meeting muted. And when President Balinski calls for public comment, those joining us in the meeting by Teams can toggle their mute status right on the meeting toolbar by clicking on the microphone icon. And those of you that have joined via audio conference, just a reminder that you can toggle your mute status by pressing star six. And nobody can unmute another person. So you do have to unmute yourself to participate when the time comes. And just a reminder that if you have any technical difficulties, you can always hop over to the YouTube livestream, put your comment there, and I'll read it into the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skiles. So for those of you watching this video in the future, the state of Illinois is currently under a gubernatorial disaster proclamation, which was issued by Governor Pritzker due to the coronavirus global pandemic. And as a result, all in-person village governmental meetings have been canceled. However, the state has amended the Open Meetings Act to permit electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the Village Board during a gubernatorial disaster proclamation. So we are conducting our business tonight in compliance with the new provisions of state law. As usual, this meeting is being broadcast live on our local access cable channel number six and on the internet at youtube.com/user/villageofwilmette/live. I will read that URL one more time because, as Mr. Skiles mentioned, there are chat features that go along with that. So it's www.youtube.com/user/villageofwilmette/live. And there's no spaces or dots or dashes or anything like that. A recording of the meeting will be archived on the Village's YouTube website as we do with all of our televised public meetings. Now, a remote meeting requires a different mechanic for public participation. So to ensure that our residents, business owners, and other interested parties have had the opportunity to participate in this meeting, we have solicited public comment prior to the start of the meeting via email. So if you sent an email to publiccomment@wilmette.com, your email has been provided to the board members, and it will be included in the minutes of the meetings, but it will not be read during the meeting. Members of the public who are watching the broadcast can participate during our designated public comment periods by submitting comments through the YouTube Live chat feature, and a member of the Village staff will read your comments to the Village Board. For those of you who have connected to the meeting via the Microsoft Teams software or the telephone, at the appropriate time, I'll ask people to speak up if they'd like to make a public comment. Because of the logistical difficulties of not being in person together, I will first ask people to identify themselves as someone who would like to address the board. I will assemble a list, and then I will call on the individuals, person by person, for their turn to speak. For people speaking during public comment, they will be allotted three minutes to address the board, just as they are during an in-person meeting. All comments received from the public, regardless of how they are received, will be recorded into the meeting minutes as we typically do. Now, I am going to mute everyone again, just so that... And I would ask people to please keep themselves on mute until they are ready to speak. And I will remind people to take themselves off of mute during public comment and other times. So I'm going to mute everyone right now. Okay. Before each meeting, the board receives a packet of agenda materials, and these materials are also posted on wilmette.com on the Friday before our meeting. So residents and other interested parties can review the very same materials that the board members receive. This week's packet contained 369 pages. So move on to item two, which is public comment. And again, at an in-person meeting during public comment, individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address the board on an item which is not on the agenda tonight. Items which are on the agenda, people can comment during those periods when they're actually brought up. So again, this meeting is being conducted remotely. Public comments, which were submitted by email in advance of the meeting, have been provided to the board, but are part of the public record, but will not be read during the meeting. So now I'll ask people who are watching on YouTube Live. You can submit your comments for the Village staff to read. The chat window is to the right of the video window, and you can enter your comments there. And while those folks are typing, I'll ask if there's any individuals who have connected to the meeting via Microsoft Teams or via the telephone who would like to address the board during public comment. I'd ask those individuals to please identify themselves now. And again, I just muted everyone, so you have to unmute yourself first if you'd like to speak. So are there any individuals who would like to address the board on an item which is not on the agenda tonight? Again, you'll have to unmute yourself to be heard. Okay. Are there any comments that were submitted from people via the YouTube Live chat?
No comments, President Balinski.
Okay. So we'll move on from public comment to item three. Item three is the consent agenda. As described on the agenda, items which are routine business that are not normally debated by the Village Board are placed on the consent agenda. We've got quite a big consent agenda tonight. All items that begin with the number three are on the consent agenda. And tonight, that consists of items 3.1 through 3.29... No, 3.30, I'm sorry. Thank... 3.30, that's right. Items on the consent agenda are up for approval tonight. If an item is not removed by a member of the audience and is not removed by one of the trustees, the item will be approved and it will not be discussed. So I'll begin by asking if there's any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda. So we'll walk through the exact same steps that we did for public comment for this. So people who are watching on YouTube Live should now submit their requests via the chat window. And I will ask if there's any individuals who have connected to the meeting via Microsoft Teams or the telephone who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda. If you would like to remove an item from the consent agenda, please identify yourself now, unmute yourself, and let me know. Okay, hearing none. Again, you'd have to unmute yourself to be heard. Are there any requests that came in via YouTube Live? Maybe we'll give this a couple of seconds here still, Peter, but did you get anything?
No requests.
Okay. So we'll hang on for one minute here. But in the interim, I will ask if there are any items that any of the trustees would like to remove from the consent agenda. I see some nodding heads. Remind everyone they're muted probably still. Okay, Mr. Skiles, still nobody coming in from YouTube chat?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so may have a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
I believe that was trustee Barrow. Is there a second?
Second.
I think trustee Kennedy was the second on that one. It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Barrow.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Kersman.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett.
Aye.
President Balinski.
Aye. So the motion carries. The consent agenda has been adopted. If you are here for an item on the consent agenda, it was just approved. And to clarify for people who have logged in, again, all the items beginning with the number three have been approved, and that includes land use items 3.7, 3.8, 3.9, and 3.11. So if you were listening for one of those items, it was just approved. There will be no further discussion of those items or any of the other items on the consent agenda. So you're free to log off or hang up. But of course, you are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. So move on to item four, which is the report of officers. And I will begin with just a quick status update for the board members regarding the timing of recommendations for appointments to the Housing Commission and the Human Relations Commission. I'm continuing conversations with potential candidates for the two commissions. I have some actually scheduled for later this week. And in order to follow the timeframes suggested by the Administration Committee, I don't think all the materials will be ready early enough so that we could have those recommendations for the first meeting in December. And normally, that would be our only meeting, but we are having a second meeting in December this year because there are some contracts that we have to approve. But I don't think these recommendations belong on a meeting agenda so close to Christmas. And so I expect to have a memo with the recommendations to the trustees in December with the recommendations for the Housing Commission at the first meeting in January. And then soon after, we'll conclude our work on the Human Relations Commission as well. So just an update to the trustees and to the community in terms of timing there. We'll move on to our report from our village manager, Mr. Bremen.
Thank you, President Balinski. I have a couple of brief items. One is with the Thanksgiving holiday this week. Residents who have refuse and recycling collection on Thursday and Friday will have their pickups delayed by one day to Friday and Saturday, and we'll get back to the normal schedule next week. Our annual holiday light recycling program started yesterday. We have bins available 24/7 outside of our public works facility on Laramie Avenue, and those bins will be out there through January, so please go ahead and recycle your lights. Last week, a leaf collection is next week. Generally, we extend later into December if necessary, but given the timing of the leaf drop, we'll be able to pick up the entirety of the community within our normal schedule. So please, everyone rake your leaves to the curb before your scheduled pickup time next week. And then lastly, following the Thanksgiving holiday, in accordance with public health guidance for the Illinois Department of Public Health, we will be closing Village Hall to in-person services once again until a date uncertain. At this time, all of our services can and have been provided remotely via phone, email, and we can always set up appointments with residents as necessary. So please visit our website for more information on how to attain services at Village Hall. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bremen. Our next report is from our Corporation Counsel, Mr. Stein.
No report, Mr. President.
And the next item on the agenda is item five, which is the Report of the Liquor Control Commissioner, and there is no report tonight. So we'll move on to item six. That's the Standing Committee Reports. First one is item 6.1, the Land Use Committee. Trustee Barrow.
Thank you, President Balinski. All items are on the consent agenda.
Next up is the Finance Committee. Trustee Kennedy.
We have three items on the agenda tonight, and the first is the Fiscal Year 2020 Financial Status Update. And so I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Holgren.
I'm going to go ahead and share the presentation. All right, can everybody see the presentation?
We can see the presentation, yes.
All right. So I wanted to start off our presentation by saying that we have another month of very positive news related to our finances and the impact of COVID. From an overall perspective, we are expecting to see a fairly... We're expecting to see an impact of around $120,000 to $230,000 impact on our negative margin for the fiscal year. This is due to positive, better-than-expected revenue performance and then the expense savings that the village has implemented over the year. So I'm going to try to move through this fairly quickly as there is positive news, but please stop me at any point in time if you have any questions. So the first part I wanted to go through and look at was the revenues. So in the month of October, our revenues overperformed by around 23%. Now, the bulk of this is really due to the shift in property tax dispersments. When the property taxes for Cook County were delayed, the last dispersment was expected for the month of October. So you'll see, when we look at the month of October compared to our two scenarios, we were pretty much on target for the month when we looked at those two scenarios. We are now all caught up with those property tax dispersments. So going forward, there won't be any timing impacts on our revenues. When we look at our monthly performance, again, that month of October slightly overperformed our budget, but that was due to the property taxes. You'll notice in the month of November, we have slightly higher than expected compared to budget. This is due to the approximate $200,000 CARES funding coming in through the state and through the county. And then in the month of December, you will see that there is a slight decline in revenue when we're looking at scenario one and two. But overall, year-to-date revenues are down around 3.5%, and we expect our revenues for the full year to be down between 3.2% and 3.7%. When we look at potential changes that are changes that we had to our model, there were two areas that we made adjustments up in, and that was income tax and sales tax. Those are both based upon preliminary information received from the state for the month of November, which again continued to show very positive revenue performance in both of those areas.
Mr. Holgren, I have a question.
Yes.
With respect to the real estate transfer tax, you've done a lot better than expected. So I'm a little surprised to see the yellow arrow. Is that just being cautious, or...?
Yeah, so we are... We're just on the real estate transfer tax, as well as licenses and permits, which have both significantly overperformed. We are continuing to remain conservative during those final two months of the year, really to kind of set a bottom edge for our revenues. We expect them to come in slightly higher than what our expectations are. But again, for real estate transfer tax, we generally don't see a lot of activity in the final two months of the year. So there's not a lot of shifting in the total dollars in that space.
Thank you.
Eric, Mr. Holgren, I have another question too, or a comment. I think this is more of a comment, but you know, we've seen in the papers that talk about how municipalities are not taking advantage of some of their funding grants from the state. That $200,000 for the CARES funding, that is that funding, right? Wilmette is taking full advantage of that?
That is correct. We have put all of our... We have put our best efforts forth to receive the maximum funding available through the CARES Act, and we are not amongst those municipalities that have not taken advantage.
Mr. Holgren, this is trustee Sullivan. Can I ask a question? And it actually, it relates to sales tax, but it actually is a sentence in your memo on page four regarding sales tax. And I might be misreading this, but there's a sentence in here that says municipal tax, including local use tax receipts for October were $339,000, which was 9.4% over budget of $310,000. The underperformance of municipal tax is offset by increased revenues in local use tax, which were driven by online sales. I'm confused. When we say municipal tax is outperform, but then it underperform, what does that sentence mean?
Sorry. So maybe it was poor phrasing in that. But when we look, when we report out our sales tax information in the report, it includes the municipal tax and the local use tax. When we go down kind of to that next level of information, sales tax is down several percentage points, but local use tax is up and is covering that differential. Does that make... So it's really the... When we report out sales tax, it's the aggregate of both of those taxes together.
Capital M, capital T.
Yeah, okay.
Versus little small m, small t.
Yeah, we'll work to... I'll work to make sure that that's a little bit more clarified on the next report. But because we report them together, we were trying to provide a little bit more granularity in the report to say municipal tax is slightly down, local use tax is up and covering that difference.
Got it. Okay.
So speaking to trustee Kennedy's point about our revenue projections and what we've done, when you look through our year-to-date performance for real estate transfer tax, we're up nearly 30% comparatively to year-to-date performance from 10 months last year. We continue to project a 15% reduction over the last two months of the year. But at the end of the day, we are still expecting to see a 25% increase in real estate transfer tax comparatively to 2019. But the rest of this chart is really showing how we've performed throughout this year through 10 months, what our remaining assumptions are for the last two months, and where we expect to see our final revenue figures at the end of 2020. So on the highest end of the spectrum, we are... Have 25% better-than-expected for real estate transfer tax, but our bottom two performers are really fuel tax and hotel tax, which are expected to see significant declines comparatively to budget. But all of these numbers have improved. That last column has really improved over the years. So I think sales tax is a really good line to look at here. At one point, we were expecting to see revenue reductions in the 5% to 10% range, and now we're expecting only to see around a 2% decrease in the sales tax line, which is far exceeding our expectations.
Mr. Holgren?
Yes.
It seems to me the hotel tax line is somewhat... The loss is somewhat exaggerated because we don't keep most of the hotel tax at this point. So the...
That is correct.
The net loss to us is much less than 52%, right? Or no?
Yes, it would be significantly less because we are rebating approximately 70% of that hotel tax back to the business. So there is an offset on the expense side. So when we get to the expense portion, there is the line item that shows that commensurate decrease.
Yeah, I mean, the percentages, the percentages are probably right. But if you do the math just in the revenue side on the dollars, that's where trustee Kennedy, to your point, that's where it seems like it's a bigger hit because the expense side is also reduced by a commensurate percent. So...
Except we give back 70%. So we have... We're only really 30% at risk here.
Right. And that's what I'm saying. If you just look at it, to your point, if you just look at that percent and compare it to the revenue dollar amount, it will be overstated because there's a corresponding same percent reduction in the expense, the rebate. And that's just the way it's accounted for. Yes.
I understand. I just wanted to point out that it's not so dire as it looks.
Yeah. It's not as big a revenue source to us as the bottom line.
Yeah, I think that's the other piece missing here is the total value of each one of them.
Right.
But when we've looked at the overall outcome, we have gradually increased our performance from our original expectations back in April. When we first developed these projections, we were looking at revenues of around... That ranged from around $31.7 million down to around $31 million. Those projections have come up significantly. So if we're looking at scenario one, our performance has improved dramatically. And then in scenario two, we've seen nearly $2 million increase in the performance. So these are... This is one of those scenarios where we were very conservative on our revenue reductions, and fortunately, there has been significant overperformance.
Yeah, and I'm actually, Mr. Holgren, I'm not so sure I would characterize it as overly conservative. Back in April and May, we were scared. We were concerned that the red line was not the worst case, that there was an even worse case out there. And, you know, May-June, you know, early performance suggested we might be right about that. So I think we were trying to be realistic with our band of sort of high and low. But I think we were all pretty worried back in April-May that the red line might have actually been lower. So I mean, this is great.
I would agree.
Obviously here, but...
In June, when we dipped below that 30% mark, I think that was when the flag started to go off. But we have steadily improved since that point in time.
Yeah.
So again, going over to the expense side, we performed around 12% below our budget expectation in the month of October. This was in part due to two items. Again, underspend associated with capital purchases. And then the other part was when we had initially approved the economic relief grants, we shifted some of those dollars out to the month of October. The additional grants were approved at the beginning part of November, so clearly, they couldn't have taken place in October. But we're expecting... We're shifting those remaining expenditures out to period 11 and 12 with the expectation that we will start distributing grant funds next week. When we look at the expense side, we have savings on the personnel side, operating expenditures. We've gone through most of these before, but savings on our engineering program in capital equipment. We deferred our comprehensive plan. And then to the point on the hotel tax rebate, we're looking at a savings of around $125,000. The last part here is we have approved that $531,000 for economic grants. We spent $276 to date. We approved at the last meeting $170,000 for the restaurant program, meaning that there are still $85,000 that are unallocated. That would be additional savings if those were not approved and spent before the end of this year. So when we look at our expense outcomes, the shifting of those expenditures for capital, as well as the economic grant, drive up the month of November and December comparatively to the original budget. But we are still expecting to see a nearly million-dollar savings on the expenditure side.
I'm sorry, Mr. Holgren. This is trustee Dodd. I just have one... I just want to make sure you understand this, obviously, this model that you're showing. So the November model is really providing, and I would have asked this on the revenue side as well, is really providing data through October, correct? So we will have two more models for the end of the year.
Yeah, we will have updated up information. So those yellow bars will eventually become green bars when we have the actual performance for those months. So what ultimately this leads to is an outcome of, in scenario one and scenario two, of looking at, in both scenarios, seeing our reserve level at around 38% of our operating expenses. Because revenues have performed better than expected, and we, at an early point in time, put in cost-saving measures, we are really projecting the net impact of COVID-19 to be around $120,000 to $230,000 based upon current information. So with that positive news, I don't have anything else in this presentation. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions for Mr. Holgren, or for Mr. Bremen for that matter, or Ms. Malloy?
I would just add that, given that we're looking to have our second meeting in December be very short and focused on neighborhood storage, we're not planning to walk through the financial presentation. We'll prepare the report and presentation for the board and send that to you via email. We can post it to our website. But we'll keep that meeting short, and we'll come back with another presentation then in January that will hopefully button up the year.
Thank you, Mr. Bremen.
All right.
The second thing we have on the agenda is the opening of a public hearing on the Village of Wilmette's Fiscal Year 2021 Budget. So turn it over to President Balinski to open that hearing.
All right, thank you, trustee Kennedy. So I will now declare the public hearing open. In a... We've got an echo here.
Yeah.
Let me try muting someone. So at a in-person meeting, I would ask the question if there was anyone present who would like to be heard on the matter of the Village of Wilmette's Fiscal Year 2021 Budget. And then I would ask for a show of hands. Obviously, I can't do that because the meeting's being conducted remotely. So we'll run through our public comment cadence here. If there are individuals who are watching on YouTube Live and they wish to submit comments for the Village staff to read on the matter of the Village of Wilmette 2021 Budget, please do so now. Again, the chat window is to the right of the YouTube Live video window. And while those folks are typing, first, I'm going to go to our Corporation Counsel because of some ambiguity in the amendment to the Open Meetings Act. As a protective measure, the Corporation Counsel is in council chambers tonight in the event that anyone showed up to make public comment during this public hearing. So, Mr. Stein, is there anyone present in council chambers who wishes to make a statement during the public hearing?
No, Mr. President. I was just in council chambers, which is 10 feet away from... Or 15 feet away from my office. I was the cause of the echo, so that's why I muted that and came into my office. But there is nobody in the hallway waiting. There was nobody to enter the building. And nobody in the council chambers wishing to make a comment of the public hearing.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Stein. So I will now ask if there are any individuals who have connected to the meeting via Microsoft Teams or via the telephone who would like to address the board. Again, I'll ask people to identify themselves first, and then I'll go back and call on individuals separately to address the board during the public hearing. So you do have to unmute yourself if you're interested in addressing the board. Is there anyone who would like to address the board on this matter? Okay, I'm going to go back to Mr. Skiles. Were there any comments from people via YouTube Live chat for the public hearing?
No comments, President Balinski.
All right. Anyone else who'd like to be heard on this matter? All right, hearing none. I now declare the public hearing closed. And I will tell you, that's the first time I've ever done a public hearing remotely, but hopefully, we covered all the bases there. So trustee Kennedy, back to you.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to... I think... And I think I'm speaking on behalf of all of the trustees and President Balinski how pleased we all are with the work that's been done on the budget by the staff. how um, pleased we all are with the work that's been done on the budget by the staff and the diligence of the trustees and, and President Balinski in, in pursuing questions. Um, excellent job once again, and you never fail to impress, but this was particularly impressive given the difficulty of the circumstances, so applause. Um, the third matter on the agenda is the adoption of ordinance twenty-twenty dash zero dash fifty, adopting the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one annual budget.
So I need a motion from you on that.
I move that we adopt ordinance twenty-twenty dot zero dash fifty, adopting the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one annual budget.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Is there a second?
Second.
That was trustee Plunkett. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Um, as we all know, the staff has been regularly communicating with the board on the finances of the village and doing a good job, a, a very good job, an excellent job, as trustee Kennedy pointed out. And the staff has been working on the budget for a number of months. Uh, we have discussed the twenty-twenty-one budget in a number of public meetings. So adoption of the twenty-twenty-one budget is the next step in our annual budget process, uh, which will conclude at our next meeting, that's the first meeting in December, with the adoption of the tax levy. So I will turn it over to the staff uh, for the presentation uh, on the budget.
All right, um, thank you, trustee Kennedy, for the kudos. Um, um, I must say I am been very impressed with the staff here as well. Uh, we're, working with the team here on the budget has been um, fantastic and everybody here has um, put wonderful efforts into this final product. So I would like to thank all the staff members as well for their efforts. Um, so looking at the twenty-twenty-one budget approval, we began the um, initial discussions on the budget um, in mid-August when we went through the mid-year financial review. Uh, we then had a discussion, uh, our CIP workshop at the beginning of September. Um, at the end of October, we had our budget workshop and uh, we are now at the budget ordinance adoption for November twenty-fourth. So as President Balinski said, the last step will be at our next meeting with the property tax adoption. Looking through several of the budget highlights, um, we are expecting to maintain all village services as we move into twenty-twenty-one. Um, we have looked to minimize the impact on taxpayers. Um, as an example, our initial projections on the property tax levy were at four point one percent. We have brought that down to three point nine percent. Um, and the average stormwater utility fee um, was continued to be in line with our initial projections uh, with an increase from a hundred and forty-four to a hundred and seventy-five dollars. But there were no other tax or fee increases as part of the proposed budget. The budget also includes significant infrastructure investment, around thirty-one million dollars in total infrastructure projects. Twenty-one million of that is for our critical sewer improvements, um, including this uh, neighborhood storage project at Hibbard Park. Additionally, we have dollars uh, um, four hundred thousand dollars for maintaining the water plant. Um, and there's gonna be a slide here in a minute that's gonna show the seven million dollars in uh, road investment for the upcoming year. Um, so we look at an overall fund overview. When we look at our non-internals service funds, we're looking at an annual budget of ninety-two million dollars in expenditures um, that helped to fund the village's operations as well as um, our capital investment and our pension funds. As I spoke about earlier, um, here's the slide on the infrastructure investment of just over seven million dollars. Uh, we're looking at two point eight million dollars on the Central Avenue reconstruction, two point four million dollars on the road program. Um, and then significant investment in our alleys, our brick streets, um, as well as investments towards um, traffic calming measures, pedestrian improvements and sidewalk and curb improvements as well. Looking at the overall taxpayer impact, as we spoke about earlier, the levy increase is going um, to three point nine percent. Um, this is a a decrease comparatively to the twenty-twenty levy increase of nearly five percent. Um, when we look at our water rates, our sewer rates, our refuse and our vehicle stickers, those are all remaining flat. Um, and the stormwater fee, as we, as I spoke about, is increasing um, from a hundred and forty-four to a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, this is funding the debt service that has been taken on for both phase one and phase one A. So we look at our revenue, or excuse me, at our review methodology for twenty-twenty-one, our goals were to, as we spoke about, minimizing the impact to taxpayers, um, keeping service levels where they are and um, investing in capital um, improvements throughout the community. We took a very conservative approach to our resin, revenue assumptions and will continue to provide updates to the board on a monthly basis uh, about potential risk, risk, or revenue risks, excuse me. Um, we are going to, we have identified a multi-step contingency um, that will give us flexibility to respond if there are downturns in the economy or any uh, revenue downturns. Um, and again, we'll continue to provide those monthly financial reviews. So when we looked at our revenue assessments, we broke everything into, there are five major categories. Um, minimal risk, which include our property taxes and our charges for service. Um, moderate risk, um, which includes real estate transfer tax and permits. Um, for those two, we, we took a very conservative approach and we think that there's a potential upside um, to both of those. On the utility tax side, we see that there's a potential downside risk for that one. Um, for our high-risk category, uh, we look at home rule sales tax, fuel and hotel tax, and then our parking meter revenues at the, um, for the commuter lots. There's a couple areas where we are looking at enhancement options. As we've talked about before, there are some non-recurring revenue, or excuse me, non-recurring permits for the Optima project as potent, as well as Loyola that we can see a potential million-dollar upside and will continue to review revenue sources throughout the year. Um, there are two areas that we don't have as much information as we would like on, and so we have an undetermined um, category for these that include income tax um, as well as state and local use tax. Um, the sale, or sorry, the sales and local use tax. Um, because of the change in the methodology from the state, we are uncertain as to what that potential revenue upside or downside is in that space. So if revenues continue, if, if we have issues on our revenue side, we, there are um, expense options. Uh, we broke our expenditures into different categories, um, that included internal expenses, uh, capital, which includes equipment and infrastructure, a review of contact contractual services. And then the last option would be looking at service and staffing levels. When we look at, um, as part of twenty-twenty-one, we did use a significant amount of reserve. Um, and this is really a testament to the village's strong financial position. Um, building up cash reserves as well as taking proactive measures on um, pensions as well as just debt service um, allowed us to have the reserves to help really weather the impacts of COVID. Uh, we are expecting a one point nine million dollar draw on reserves. This is for uh, COVID revenue downside of one point two million dollars. The planned spend down for public safety pensions, the comprehensive plan, and then looking at a structural operating deficit of around a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, even with this reserve utilization, our projected reserves are still in excess of our thirty percent target. And, and so this puts us in a good position moving into twenty-twenty-one and beyond. This next slide provide.
Go back to that for a moment.
Yes.
So, um, you said our projected reserves will still exceed thirty percent target. What will the um, reserve, what is the um, balance?
So right now, based upon um, updates to our performance in twenty-twenty, uh, we'll expect those reserves to be somewhere between thirty-two and thirty-three percent.
Okay, so that's different than what's in the presentation where it was showing closer to like thir- thirty-eight percent?
Well, the thirty-eight percent is our reserves at the end of twenty-twenty. What this is, is the drawdown of our reserves by the end of twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, and so that project and, projection you said is thirty-two percent?
Yeah, it's in the, it's a thirty-two to thirty-three percent range.
Okay, thank you.
So when we're looking at our reserve levels um, across the different funds, uh, you can see where we're expecting to end twenty-twenty. Um, and then this last column is looking at the year-end projection. So you will see that drawdown in reserves for our non-pensioned families. Um, so looking forward, uh, as previously mentioned, our past financial efforts have put us in a good position to endure the economic downturn. Um, as a testament to this, our AAA bond rating really shows our strong finances. And as we um, continue to invest heavily in capital, it will allow us to take advantage of um, of the best available interest rates. As we move forward, we have several areas to watch. Um, this includes the resurgence of COVID nineteen and potential new business restrictions. Um, our structural budget imbalance due to stagnating revenues. And then um, a long-term financial obligations, including capital investment and pension obligations. But additionally, we do have positive indicators. Um, as previously discussed, the real estate market has been significantly stronger than expected and our permit activity has been resilient, which is really shown through in our uh, twenty-twenty performance. Um, additionally, we look at several major developments, including Optima and looking to fill other major retail space. Uh, as previously noted, our, the change in the sales tax distribution methodology provides um, upside, potential upside for the village's finances. Um, and our, our management of liabilities, including pensions and debt service has really um, will give, reap benefits as we move into the future. So with that, I, that concludes the twenty-twenty budget presentation. Um, if there are any other questions, um, available to take those.
Any, any questions at this point in time for the staff?
I actually have a question, sorry, and I should have asked it on the, on the previous slide, which is another question about the reserve level. You know, I'm always asking about the reserve. Um, I just had a question on the general fund reserve. Um, it's showing, um, the previous of slides said there was a one point nine million dollar drawdown of reserves, but then the year, the ending reserve, the twenty-twenty was, and year-end reserve was thirteen point four, and then the twenty-twenty-one year-end projection was eleven point one five, so it's more than one point nine million. It was so I'm just curious what the difference is there in terms of the drawdown. It looks like it's about. Yeah.
Um, so part of that is there are funds that are utilized as part of the infrastructure investment program. Um, so there are certain funds that are dedicated to that, whether they're the property tax dollars, um, the dollars associated with the um, vehicle stickers that get um, they get allocated to that program. So there is a separate cash flow that shows that um, the balance is associated with the infrastructure program. If you give me a minute, I'll pull that.
So can you pull, pull up that reserve level slide again for me for just a minute?
Give me one second.
Okay, so what I was asking about, I just want to make sure I understand, because the infrastructure investment is a separate line item. I was asking about the general fund reserve amounts, the thirteen point four one compared to eleven point one five? Which that's
Correct, because.
Sorry.
Right, so the, the draw, the, that two-point, roughly two point three million dollar decrease in the general fund is, is is two parts. One of it is the one point nine million dollars that is being utilized to um, fund the general operations. The remaining three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, give or take, is additional dollars that are being allocated to the infrastructure investment fund. So that's why you'll see that there's a an increase in the reserve levels in that program.
Okay, so that was actually gonna be my second question, which is, can you explain to me why the infrastructure investment program is almost, in terms of the year-end balance is almost doubling? It's going from one million to one point nine six million?
Right, so part of that is associated with um, us building up cash balances or reserve levels in the infrastructure investment um, fund for future capital investment on, for the road program.
Well, why wouldn't we be spending it in the current year? Why are we building reserves? I mean, we're trying to get our roads fixed as quickly as possible, so why would we be building up reserves for that?
Uh, we have, we have, our future planned road program um, currently has expenditures, if we look out into the future year, has current, or sorry, has expenditures that exceed our future expected revenue, so we're building up those cash balances so that we can draw them down in future years.
So, Mr. Hallgren, it's trustee Sullivan, one question on this reserve, because looking at this slide, we have a twenty-twenty year-end estimate of thirteen point four one. But in your previous presentation where we just gave a financial update, we never, we, on, I forget what, I don't know what page it's on, but the reserve projections, that number's not reflected in any of our scenarios.
I, I'm sorry.
How do we have four general fund estimates? And what's an accurate one?
Part of it is the relationship with that infrastructure investment fund, and I, I, I don't know how to having a hard time expl- clearly having a hard time explaining how the funds um, get allocated in there and um, compared with the general fund as well as the surf dollars.
So, let me, let me, let me. Mr. Hallgren, let me interject. Trustee Sullivan, the, the twenty-twenty year-end estimate, I believe in this slide is in the budget, and that's moved as the year goes on. We don't adjust that every time we adjust our, our, our movement. And if you look at the reserve projection, um, that was on page uh, three thirteen of the PDF, it has three point five four, uh, I'm sorry, thirteen point five four and thirteen point four three, which is pretty close to the thirteen point four one. So I believe that's the answer to why those numbers don't foot, because once we set the budget, we don't adjust it every week as we change our projections. Did I get that right, Mr. Hallgren?
That is, that, yes, that is correct.
I get it, but I, I think my, my big issue is this general fund number, we always say an estimate and we always say, oh, it's gonna be thirty-one, thirty-two percent, and we always come in over budget on the general fund. Every year, we always have, it's a higher dollar amount. So I think that's what
That's probably a good thing, that it's not the other way around, though.
Okay, but you know what? We're taxing residents on it and saying, and we, we want to be overtaxed on our reserve.
But we're drawing down one point nine million next year.
But, you know, we always say
The issue you're talking about.
I, I get it, President Balinski, but you know what? Whether it's, it's a rounding error in some people's mind, rounding error is important to them. We are gonna tax them for a general fund reserve that's higher than the thirty percent. That's, I want to be able to explain that, why we always do it, and the number always comes in higher at year end.
But, but this, remember, the thirty, the thirty percent should be a floor. Thirty percent should not be a ceiling. Thirty percent should be a floor. That's what the rating agency expect of us. So ending the year budget, budgeting for a thirty-two or thirty-three percent reserve level is prudent, in particular in the uncertainty.
I'm not saying it's not prudent, and I, I actually think it was a good thing this year, but right now is the first time you've ever said it's a floor. We've always said thirty percent gets us the double A. So if we're saying it's a thirty percent, then I think we as a trustee need to say, what is our comfort level? Should we be at thirty-eight percent because we're in COVID?
Well, and I, I want to, sorry, keep going.
We are taxing our residents to be over thirty percent, and for the first time I've heard, thirty percent is a floor.
Well, that's what the rating agencies want us to be at, thirty percent, right? So shouldn't we be trying to be at what they ask for?
At thirty percent, or is it a floor? Because what you, that's two different things. We're always, we have never been close to thirty percent in the times that I've been aboard.
Yeah, it was well below thirty percent when I was on the board.
That's why I said, when I was on the board, since I've been on the board, we've been over budget, so. I, I just think, we just need to say to our, make sure what, what it be, have, come up with a consistent reserve policy. And may, you're exactly right. Being over-reserved going into the economy we've just gone in through was a benefit.
This is the right
We're gonna continue to be challenged. So I'm not saying it's wrong, I just think we need to say to show our residents, why over thirty percent? And then we're gonna tax on top of that and remain that. Is it
No, but again, again, remember, this is the year we're drawing down on the reserves.
But we're still over, we're still But we're still over, we're still over the 30%.
Yeah, but you don't want to budget right to 30%. In, in this environment, a little bit of cushion makes a lot of sense. And frankly, our, you know, to your point, trustee Sullivan, is two or three points enough? That's, that was the judgment of the, of the, of the staff and the board in all our conversations.
Correct, and I think, I think this year it played off, it was, it was a very prudent thing to have out there. I, my, my big issue is, we never come in, we always look at reserve numbers that are never accurate when we come in at year-end, they're up or down, and usually they're higher.
Right, which again, I would, I would argue is a good thing. This is a conversation I'd rather be having than Evanston's conversation about an $8 million budget gap that they have, because they haven't accurately looked at how things like Northwestern and impact their, their dollars. I mean, if you gave me the choice between being over by a million dollars every year, and by the way, that money isn't disappearing, it ends up being reinvested in capital projects, and this year we're spending it down, that's what the surf is for, or being below a million dollars and having to tell the rating agencies and having to tell our residents that we didn't manage our business well here, I would choose being over. And I think that's, that's, the staff has typically budgeted conservatively so that we don't have to have difficult conversations about cutting staff or cutting capital investment.
Yeah, okay, that's not what I was saying at all. I was just saying, our numbers are never accurate, and we always come in over, and we, we are going to tell residents, we're going to tax them for this, when we have always said we want to maintain at least 30% or be at 30%, because that's what saves our double, our triple A. But I, I.
But, 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 I mean, Dan, Dan, you know, the one thing you know about a projection, the minute you make a projection, the one thing you know about it is, it will be wrong. Everybody who makes a projection, it is wrong, because it's impossible to project things like this. The question is, by how much and which direction? And a little bit wrong to the good is the best place to be on those, you know that.
I get that.
So can I speak to this for a moment, because I actually have some, I want to speak to this as well? So I think the first thing that I'd like to say is, I thought last year at our budget discussion, actually, President Balinski, we talked about this reserve level, as that's something that I've continued to bring up. And I thought we made a policy change, that actually we did what, we wanted to stick to 30%, not 31 or 32 or 33, but 30%. I thought we actually talked about that, is kind of changing our reserve policy.
And yeah, and, and I just don't think you get there in one year, in particular in the middle of a pandemic.
Okay.
This is, this is not the year to draw down the reserves, that's all. We, we are drawing them down, that's a path towards getting them down.
We're drawing them down, but we're still, at the end of the year, we know we're going, I believe, we're going to be, we're, right now, the projection is at 33%. And it's, I think it's a little confusing, when it says the 2020 year-end estimate was 13.41, what we approved on the, at the budget was 12, was 12.8. Okay, so if you go back to our 2020 budget and look at our reserve level and what we approved, it was 12.8. And I remember that, because trustee Sullivan and I had a question on that, of how it increased. And so, and if you look at what's happened, and when we, when we first created this budget, when we first had our budget meeting, we were using September numbers, okay? And so, we had just heard in our update, we just heard it in our update, that numbers are getting better, that we're actually feeling better. In fact, then, if you compare the, our September reserve balances to November, they've, they've gone up from either $450,000 to 700, between 450,000 and 700,000, if you just compare the two. Okay, I've just looked at that. And my point is, every single time our reserve balance goes up, every time our reserve balance goes up, we are actually charging our taxpayers more than we should, at least above what we feel. And so I'm just questioning why we're setting a reserve level, starting now, when we're being very conservative, and we've taken into account the COVID numbers, and one, we already have taken into account a $1.2 million reduction in revenues. Why aren't we, why aren't we reducing the property tax more?
Because it's not prudent, in my opinion, it's not prudent to bet that we're right.
Okay, well, I would like to propose that we reduce it by $500,000, because we, from the time we did our actual budget session to now, our reserve balance has actually gone up by 500,000. So we were all comfortable with it two months ago, so I'm asking, why aren't we comfortable with it today?
President Balinski, if I could jump in here for a second, we, we, we need to look at this from a longer-term perspective than one fiscal year. Okay, so when we adjusted our reserve policy last year, to, as we had discussed, we knew we were exceeding the 30% target from Moody's. We did not want to be above 30, so what the policy asked us to do was, when we get above 30, start spending it down to get back to that Moody's target. But it doesn't tell us to spend it down immediately or one year at a time. We need to do it thoughtfully, and we need to do it with the future in mind. So not only are we planning to spend down reserves by almost $2 million next year to get us to 33%, but then in 2022, we already know we have to spend a half million dollars in reserves on pensions. We have large infrastructure projects that are one-time, like Skokie Lake, that we had committed to not funding from our recurring road program revenue. If we don't use our reserves like we had planned to and talked about two years ago, then we'd have to put that on the property tax levy. So there is a plan to spend on that reserve, and as that reserve grows more than 33% next year, we will then spend it down for additional capital, once that money is in the bank and we have it and we're confident. Now, when you look at this year's property tax levy, we've been talking about since August now, on the fiscal year 21 budget, that we have a structural operating deficit. If we cut that property tax levy, we are going to have a larger structural operating deficit. The property tax levy funds our operations, our police, our fire, our public works, our engineering and all of that. The reserve has to be looked at separate from that levy, because we're using those reserve dollars for one-time expenditures, whether they're for our pension amortization, or for our infrastructure, or for COVID or other crises. So I strongly would recommend against lowering the projected property tax levy at this point. We spent many months vetting this, thinking about our future. We have a plan to address our roads over the next five years, we have a plan to address our pensions. We know how our debt service is going to roll into our roads, we have a good plan moving forward, we need to stay the course. We know where our levy is going over the next few years. I feel very comfortable with the foundation we've set. I do not think we should be making changes here at the last minute in November and December, after we, after we've been vetting this for many months. We're going to continue these financial reviews as we move forward. If we see our revenues performing better than we anticipated, we'll be able to respond to that and then plan for that in our fiscal year 22 levy. And we don't have to do everything at once, we need to do it incrementally, we need to do it thoughtfully, and over time as we work together.
Yeah.
And I hear you, Mike, and I respect your.
Let me, trustee Dodd, let me, let me add one more thing. There is a big difference between reserves and expense. And so when you talk about overtaxing, overtaxing for wasteful spending, or overtaxing for expenditures that are not necessary, that is very different than having a prudent plan and putting the money in the bank. The money isn't wasted, there's no wasting of the taxpayer dollars, it goes into the reserves. We're spending down some of the reserves, the reserves protected us during the COVID, and we have, as Mr. Berman outlined, remember, we've got a pension plan that includes spending down reserves. We've got capital plans that include spending down reserves. So it's not like these are permanent, and it's also not wasted, we still have the funds. So it's very, very, very different to talk about overtaxing for wasteful spending versus overtaxing for our rainy day fund and the like.
And so I would just like to say a couple things. One is, I, I respect what Mr. Berman said, but the reason, and you're right, it feels like this is at the 11th hour, but the reason why that happens, and we talk about this every year, is because we're using August numbers when we do the budget. And so as they get updated, and we just got reflected numbers, we are being prudent by looking at, reevaluating the decisions we made in August, are they still applicable today? So it's not that we're trying to look at this at the 11th hour, it's that we're trying to make sure the decisions we made with the numbers we had in August still apply to the numbers that we have today. And the second thing I would just say is, yes, we are, but we are actually also growing our infrastructure investment, we're by, by a million dollars. So we, we've made a commitment to spend this, and I, I would actually say that, in addition to the 32%, we're also adding another million dollars. I'm not trying to say that we're not being prudent here, all I'm trying to say is that this is also a time for us to make sure that what we're taxing our, our, our residents is what we really need. That's all I'm asking, I'm not suggesting we don't, I'm just suggesting a modest adjustment.
Trustee Kennedy?
Yes, if I could say something, I, I think that we have, we have to keep in mind that the best we can do is estimate. If we're a little bit off one way or another, and I think that we are very good at estimating, we're not that far off. It's not the worst thing in the world, I, what the worst thing in the world is to constantly overestimate how much money you have. And, and being a little more conservative and having a little bit more of a reserve than we would like in good times, is not a sin. It's actually to our advantage. And that, we don't get a reset at the end of the year. We don't get to say, okay, the year's over, we have this much money left, now we're going to spend it down immediately, or we're going to reduce the, the tax levy, because we don't know yet what's going to happen. And frankly, we are still in the middle of this pandemic. We still don't know the long-term consequence to our businesses. We don't know how many of them are going to be able to make it till next summer. We don't know, therefore, what our sales tax revenue is going to be. We all feel very optimistic right now, but it's premature to think that we are out of the woods, because we are not. And I think to, to reduce the tax levy at this point is courting a reduction in, in village services, a reduction in infrastructure program, if we turn out to be less, if the future turns out to be less rosy than we would like it to be today. Because if you put us, if we put ourselves back to where we were in April, and the way that we looked at the world in April, we would have thought we weren't being conservative enough, that we hadn't saved enough. And we, we were lucky that we got this far, this long, without a disaster. But I am not confident that we are out of the woods at all. I don't think our businesses are confident that this is over, that the worst is behind us, because I don't think any of us know that right now. So maybe this discussion is better had a year from now, but right now, as far as I'm concerned, it's way too early.
President, I'll respond, I mean, I'm not, and trustee Kennedy, I agree, I'm probably the more concerned on this than, or maybe aligned with where you are, and including hearing that one of our other businesses that's been a hundred-year tenant here has closed today, or is, is announced their closing. So we are going to lose, and I agree, we're in for tough times. My point was just, I would like to make sure we, we say, are we consistent in saying, what is our reserve level? And it just always seems to come in higher than where we always sort of projected to be. So getting it as accurate as possible, so we tell the residents, this is why we're doing that, this is where the tax is coming, this is why you're going to get a 3.97% increase, that's all I'm looking for. And Mr. Berman, I would just exercise caution in saying, you know, I'm looking at it by one year at a time, that is not the case. That was not my intent, and I'm not, I don't think I've demonstrated that, it's make sure we're sustainable. And the good news is, we finally were seeing good financials since April, and that, I think, helped us. But prior to that, this is where we is, we still need to manage it, so, and I'm just going to challenge the numbers.
All right, so we've sort of jumped into discussion without, you know, we were, we were going to have final questions for the team, but if there's anybody else who wants to, we're sort of into discussion, and I'll come back and ask people if they have any other questions for the staff. But any other comments here right now, and I will give everybody a chance to sort of make the usual concluding comments on the budget before we vote as well.
In the packet, not in the, the material that was sent out today, but in the memo that came out, in our, our packet, on page, it's page three of four, but whatever, it's the, sort of the, in the budget memo. It, it, it says, there's a statement in here, the paragraph that starts out, the COVID-19 pandemic has been a shock to the nation. It says, general fund revenues are projected to be 1.5 million under budget, while nearly 700,000 of expense savings. Are those numbers right, or are we, because in the prior budget, we were forecasting 1.1 versus 1.5?
Right, so these were the original figures that were included as part of the budget update. They, those have shifted since, as we updated the financial status update. But when we compiled this information, it was an extension of the prior agenda item, which included the budgetary figures.
Okay, so we didn't update the memo then?
Correct, because, yeah.
Yeah, the memo's based on, on the, the budget. I think what's different this year than in past years is we continue to do these monthly financial updates every year, every month, that we didn't do in past years, right? When we would present the budget to the board, we would never look at our actuals every month thereafter. So I think th, this is a good process, I think we're all really comfortable with it. So as we move forward into next year, you know, we'll work on molding those two together, so that they're, they're more, you know, there, there's more synchronic, that's not the right word, because I can't get it out of my mouth, but, so that they make more sense together as we're looking at these in real time and going back and looking at when the budget was put together.
Okay, other questions for the staff?
I just have a comment.
Go ahead, trustee plunk it.
Okay, so this is back to the reserves, which no one probably wants to talk about, but, you know, and over the last couple of years, we have talked about a general drawdown on the reserves. We talked about having the pension funding be a drawdown, we talked about the comprehensive plan being a drawdown. We couldn't have anticipated COVID, and, you know, we are drawing down more on the reserves than we really had talked about in the last couple of years, even as we saw those reserves go up. We knew that we wanted to draw down for pensions, you know, going forward every year, but I do think that we are drawing down more this year than we had anticipated when we discussed a gradual drawdown over the next several years. So, you know, had it not been for COVID, what kind of a discussion would we have had about reserves? It's really interesting to see where we would have been. But I do think that, just based on our budget discussions over the last couple of years, we are drawing down more this year because of that unexpected, you know, because of the pandemic and the unexpected financial consequences than we had planned. And I think that we can hopefully anticipate, you know, we're going to look at it all the time and find places to draw it down. But I, I do think that we are headed in the direction where, you know, we have a, I don't know, a handle on the numbers.
Okay, any, any questions for the staff? I will give everybody a chance still for discussion, once we sort of close with questions for the staff.
I have other questions.
Go ahead, trustee Kennedy.
I have no questions.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. All right. So if we're done with questions, I will move on to discussions, the motion has been moved, it has been seconded. I'm going to start with my comments that, don't, don't directly address the comments that were made tonight, because I prepared these comments before the meeting. But first off, again, I would like to thank the staffers' efforts. It's a lot of work, and of course, it was more difficult this year, given the uncertainty surrounding our economically sensitive revenues. Thank you to the trustees for the time they put in the process. For those of you who haven't gone through this process, members of the public, this is a huge document, takes a lot of time to get up to speed. And the trustees do a lot of homework on this with the staff and themselves at home in their, you know, uncompensated part-time jobs here, this is a big chunk of it. So I thank the trustees, again, for their work. This is a fiscally responsible budget that maintains our service levels and still includes significant investments in our municipal infrastructure, 7 million, more than 7 million for, you know, roads, sidewalks, alleys and the like. And sewer expenditures, which include Phase 2 of neighborhood storage, are budgeted at 21 million. The budget does include this drawdown that we've discussed, and that's to limit the impact of the pandemic on taxpayers. But we're using the village's rainy day fund, and the pandemic qualifies as a rainy day. And even with this drawdown, and I view this as a positive, we are still above the 30% target, which the rating agency set for triple A rated municipalities. We have to remember, we have a recession, we may be looking at not an increase in, in reserves, but a decrease in reserves in a year, because our revenues don't match up with our expenses. For the property tax increase, the portion that relates to general operations is 2.23%. That's very good, because the staff continues to manage operations well. So this is a very good budget for a very difficult time. I do want to say that because of the several years of, of very strong fiscal management, the village is not having conversations like many other municipalities are having about layoffs of public safety personnel or other draconian service cuts. Rather, we're talking about maintenance of all service levels to residents and continued investment in our municipal infrastructure. And friends, that is a high-class problem to have. Now, that said, the staff and the board will carefully monitor performance next year, and we will adjust as necessary. But at the end of the day, this is a budget that I think we can all be very proud of, and it's a result of the staff's work, and it's a result of years of good management here. So I'm very pleased with where we are right now tonight. So I'm very pleased with where we are right now tonight. Any further discussion, any of the trustees would like to be heard, just?
I, I would simply add that I, I don't think this is a time that I feel comfortable reducing the levy in any respect. I, I just think, to echo perhaps what trustee Kennedy had said, that we need to be particularly prudent going into this coming year, because we simply don't know what we're going to experience. And the budget that we've put forward reflects, as President Balinski has said, the preservation of the critical services that the residents look to the village for, yet at the same time reduces the levy as compared to last year. So I think, given the uncertainty we have, that it is a, a very good place, a very good document, and I'm, I'm very pleased with the outcome, given what we know at this time.
Thank you, trustee Barrow, others?
I would like to say a couple more things, yes. So first of all, I think, I, I think we should, in addition to obviously all the work, Mr. President Balinski, you've put on behalf of this and all the trustees, we can't not notice, obviously, Mr. Berman, Mr. Hallgren, and Ms. Malloy. I mean, Mr. Berman, this is your, it's hard for us, for me to believe that this is really your first time leading us through a budget process, and you've just done a tremendous job. And we, we are lucky to have you at the helm right now. Who could have predicted, you know, one month after our past village manager left, that you'd be put in this role, but you've just handled it gracefully, and clearly, what you've done here on this budget and all of our financial updates is a true reflection of how well you're leading our community, and I hope everybody in the community feels really good about that. And obviously, the staff you've hired as well. So I just want to make sure that you understood how much we all appreciate that, and all the residents in the community. Secondly, I just, so, you know, as we talk about reserves, so, you know, I believe this, the issue about reserves, and I just do want to speak to what trustee Plunkett said. In my mind, this is a board issue, it has no reflection on the staff or what they've done, from my perspective. It's, we're the ones who are ultimately deciding what the property levy should be and what the budget should be. And so I just, I want to address one thing trustee Plunkett said, just for my, so everybody understands, which is, we are not drawing down on reserves as much as we committed to last year. So I, I want to make sure we all understand that. So if you go back and look at the 2020 budget, and what the reserve levels were supposed to be at 2020 and 2021, we are higher than that. So we're not doing what we committed to do. And maybe I'm one to look at that, but that's how I look at it. So our projected end reserve balance for 2020, for 2020, when we approved the budget, was 12.8 million, and we're going to end this year at 13.4 million. And the 2021 projected end reserve was 9.7 million, and we're going to end at 11.15. So my point is just more, we're not actually what, we, we did have, make a concerted effort to draw down reserves, and this doesn't do that. I'm not, the second thing I'd just like to say is, I totally agree with what trustee Kennedy said. Yes, this is a very challenging time, and I don't believe we are out of the woods here with the pandemic. That's why I'm so appreciative of the thoughtful work that Mr. Berman, and Mr. Hallgren, and Ms. Malloy have done, and why we've actually spent some time thinking about it. But I want everybody to know, yes, our businesses are very challenged, so are our residents. And that's why I was bringing up the topic. Our residents are as, are struggling as much as our businesses, many of which, many of whom have lost their jobs, we don't even understand the impact for some of them. And so that's why I was bringing up the issue around the property tax levy. So, you know, I just, I wanted to make sure that everybody understood, it's not that I don't think that we haven't been thoughtful, it's not that I don't think that we've done a tremendous job managing this, and it's not to, and not that I don't think the staff has done a great job, it's just, we owe it to ourselves to make sure that every time we do it, and I'm not saying everybody doesn't, we're not doing this here, but that's why I wanted to remind us, that in addition to our businesses, we have our residents, and that's why I was proposing a slight adjustment. And that, I mean, I, that's, I know we're not going to have a further discussion, but I wanted to clarify.
Thank you, trustee Dodd.
So I'd like to share a thought or two. And first, as always, I benefit from questions and col, you know, questions that are raised, and concerns that are raised by my colleagues. But this is not a concern of mine. I am comfortable with staff's approach to how we budget. I have been nothing short than totally impressed by the work that they've done, and we've just come off months-long of having to adjust to a pandemic, in which we have come out light years better than other municipalities all around us. So to me, it's self-evident that we're doing things the right way. We are not the Willmet Public Library. Like, you know, we are not, you know, bankrolling cash here inappropriately, and I would not support, you know, what trustee Dodd is suggesting. By way of process, I would want the public to know, residents to know, that when I have concerns with budget, my process is to take it to staff, and have the first conversations offline. And if I felt like I needed to mobilize on something, I would reach out to my colleagues and start to work with them to have shared understanding of something. I've not received outreach on this, to address this as a, as a long-term concern. So, you know, I'm not in a position where I feel like, in this meeting now, I was not compelled that we should make overarching policy changes to how we do budget. I think President Bielinski has shepherded this process with staff very capably, and I like where we've resulted. There's plenty of food for thought moving forward, though, and I'm open to that, but, you know, I'm, I'm very comfortable with the product that we're, we're producing, and, you know, I want to commend staff for it.
Thank you, trustee Kersman. Trustee Kennedy? You are muted.
Just, just going back to the question of the reserves, if I, if the numbers are, are correct, that we would, projected 12.8, and we're at 13.4, the difference, as I calculated, is a mere $600,000. And that $600,000, in part, is due to the fact that the staff has reduced spending this year in, in response to COVID. We had expected to spend at least $600,000 more than we did, and the only reason we didn't is because of COVID. So I don't really see that as a budgeting problem, that's just prudent management of expenses in resp, in response to what we're going through.
And I, I think, and, and the staff can chime in here, I think the reason is, is that after the projected level was set for the 2019 year-end reserve level, the actual number came in above. And we don't adjust, you don't, that's not the way you budget, you don't change everything the day after you learn something. But I think, Mr. Berman, correct me if I'm wrong, 2019 actual ending reserve number was higher than the budgeted beginning reserve value for 2020.
That's correct, yes.
By, by more than the numbers we're talking about here. Yeah, so.
Yeah, I just.
And again, we're estimate, budgeting is estimating. I, I, in my corporate life, having done a, a corporate budget for an entire public company, you know, the one thing, and I do projections every day, the one thing you know is they're wrong, you just don't know by how much, so. Let's see, trustee Sullivan, trustee Plunkett? Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Kennedy, the floor, you could, you still have the floor.
Sorry, and, and I apologize for not making that clear. I, I, I just really feel like this is the wrong time to be talking about it, and, and I really fear that the next six months is probably going to be the worst in terms of the economic effects on our businesses, simply because they've limped along for so long, and we're now in a near shutdown again. And I think that whatever they've been able to swallow, they probably are past the point where they can swallow more losses. So we ought to be, we ought to be realistic about that, and expect that there's going to be a drawdown further in the reserves than we're hoping for in the coming year. I know that, that some residents have suffered, but I, I don't see how changing the levies to reduce the tax burden by $600,000 is going to make a bit of difference to the average homeowner. It's just not that much money. So that's, I would, I'm strongly in favor of leaving the budget as it is, and levy as it is proposed. Thank you.
Trustee Plunkett, trustee Sullivan, anything to add?
I don't have much to add, I just, I'm grateful that we're in the position that we are, and that we have these discussions that we're having, because they're discussions because we, sorry about that, in a better financial position than most of our neighbors. And I, I think that we've had a very prudent budget process for the last, you know, six years, seven years, and I look forward to, you know, how we're going to talk about this in the future. But I'm, I'm very grateful to be in our position where we are right now, and, you know, hopefully we can get our residents and our businesses through this pandemic as well.
No, and I, I would agree, I think all the comments are, were prudent.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, I will then, this, it's been moved and seconded, I'll please ask the clerk to call the roll on the motion to adopt ordinance 2020-0-50, adopting the fiscal year 2021 annual budget.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Barrow.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Kersman.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett.
Aye.
President Balinski.
Aye, so the motion carries, the ordinance adopting the 2021 fiscal year budget has been approved. Trustee Kennedy, I believe that's all on your docket tonight.
Everything else was on the consent agenda.
Okay, so we'll move on to the administration committee, which is trustee Dodd.
All items on consent.
Municipal services, trustee Sullivan.
All items approved, that consent.
Public safety, trustee Kersman.
No report.
Trustee Plunkett, the judiciary committee.
All items were on consent.
Item 6.7 is reports from special committees, there are no reports tonight. Item seven is new business, there's no additional new business discussed. So we'll move on to item eight, which is adjournment, may have a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Is that trustee Plunkett?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Kennedy was the second. At first, I thought people wanted to talk some more. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll on the motion to adjourn.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Barrow.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Kersman.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett.
Aye.
And President Balinski.
Ayes, so the motion carries, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. You're welcome.